Thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us, another opportunity to just to serve you in any way we can and to glorify you. God, I pray right now for each one in this room, and I pray that the decisions that are being made at this table, that everything we do is going to glorify you, God. I thank you for each one, I pray for safety for those who are traveling, who have been traveling over the weekend, and God, for the tragedies that we've heard, I just ask you to put your loving arms around them and comfort the families. God, thank you for always loving us, forgive us when we've done things that are so unforgivable, God, and we're so unlovable, thank you for always loving us, thank you for being the constant in our life, in your son's name I pray, amen.
So that's two dollars.
Yeah, that's right. Evan, pay it, two dollars.
All right, y'all ready? First of all, we got Mr. Chris Colwell and Greg Preston with Aflac here to speak to.
How are y'all? How you doing? Good, well, most of y'all don't know me, I actually am from Pontotok, I'm a Chris courses, this is from Union County. What we can't speak to y'all about today, I know y'all have had Aflac in the past, and one or two of y'all think maybe still have it. I'm not looking to get y'all to buy in 100% on Aflac and have us sit down with all of y'all's employees and that whole time consuming deal, that's kind of an antiquated way of that Aflac has always done things, and most of the supplemental carriers have done it that way. And it's inefficient for you guys, inefficient for your employees, to be honest, inefficient for us as well. So what we've done is we've come out with an integrated system to where you guys can use it for a wide variety of things. It's a online system that is all saved on a cloud service, so you guys will be able to access it wherever you want. Who here does like their payroll inventory management, especially a lot of vehicles and things like that? Is that person in here?
No.
Okay.
She's not in here.
Okay, that's fine. So what we're looking to offer you guys at no cost whatsoever is a system to where when you have a new employee comes on, it's an onboarding system. Some of y'all that work for larger corporations, or even some smaller corporations now, are familiar with the onboarding system, to where they go in, they do all of their tax information, they do all of their new hire information, all of their enrollment for all of their benefits, every aspect of coming to work for you guys, they're able to do online. You're also able to do it to where you can able to track PTO time. I do Pontotok's, Pontotok County, and will be doing it in the city of Pontotok soon. But the PTO aspect of it was a big part of it. Do y'all currently have a way to automatically track PTO time, or comp time, either one, or the manual right now?
Partners keep up with their own.
Okay, all right. This will be a way that they'll be able to do it, the employees will be able to do it, and obviously go through approval system, that was a big thing. Also, to have the ability to where you'll be able to pull up, multiple of you'll be able to pull up, you know, Joe Smith has this vehicle, keys to this location, this cell phone, this laptop, all of this will be automated, all of it will be to where y'all can access it. Right now, for most places, it's a very manual process, that's in a filing cabinet somewhere, you got a Go-Only location to see that, we can end all that. And like I said, we can build this out, customize it to what y'all's needs are, and it makes truly the entire process more streamlined. It also helps with y'all's benefits packages as well, and the fact, I'm guessing, Blue Rock Blue Shield?
Yeah.
Okay. It'll be integrated into it also, people having to come in once a year and do that, they'll have a login, they can go on to it, if they want to come in, of course, they still can, but it does give them the ability to where they'll be able to go in and make changes themselves, you know, during your open enrollment period. The only thing we ask, let us offer a couple of supplements, if they choose them, great, if they don't, hey, that's on them also. But once again, this is a software, there'll be no charge to y'all ever, it's not like free for a year, then you gotta start putting, no. This is something you'll be able to use for as long as you let us offer a couple of supplements. The main ones we did, do y'all, what do y'all have right now for supplemental insurance, if you don't mind me asking? Accident, cancer, short-term disability, do y'all have those now? Who are those, if you don't mind me asking, who are those?
Is it UNO?
There's one, Blackwood Company, and Carroll Sales, Carroll Thompson, and we got Colonial, and first I got Carol.
Is UNO, UNO?
Yes, UNO, UNO.
UNO.
UNO, UNO.
That's the deal.
We got Sarah.
For the vast majority of them, we're able to integrate this all into this system. Folks going to the only that I'm aware of that we can't is American Fidelity, which is what schools use, that's just, American Fidelity won't let us use it. It's called Employee Navigator, I don't know if any of y'all that, for your primary jobs, for your work, is a huge platform that a lot of Fortune 500 companies use. But that's what we're here for, see if that may be something that interests you guys. I would love, you know, to get all of your supplemental benefits. Sounds like y'all got a great relationship with whoever, that unit group or union group, whatever it is, sounds like y'all got a great relationship there. Y'all know me from Adam's House Cat, I can't move in on somebody who you can call by first name, I get that, okay? I know how this works, all right? But this system truly can make your office staff's lives, and whoever it is that does any type of employee management considerably easier, considerably easier. You're able to go in, hire, terminate, all through there, everything's together, you're not having to go to multiple places, and like I said, to be able to see everybody's tax information, everybody's benefit information, every piece of equipment that they own of the county's responsibility that they have, it's all in one place. More than likely, you're going four or five places to find that information right now. And that's the convenience that we can provide you guys, and like I said, just kind of bring it, bring it all together into one system. Questions? Everybody knows about Aflac, okay? I mean, they do, everybody, you know, we got the duck, we're the only ones that have one day pay, you file a claim today by 2:00, it's in your checking account tomorrow, nobody else can touch it. Every one of the employees that have apps on their phone they can use, but that's not the most important thing for you guys, okay? For y'all, the most important thing, like I said, is get all your information to where you can have it quickly, but don't just think benefits, it's truly a huge range that this thing builds out. We've actually started going into some of the schools, even though American Fidelity doesn't integrate with this, because of that. I'm guessing some of y'all's people have laptops or tablets, so probably have government cell phones, work trucks, you know, who's got keys to this shed, who's got keys to this, I mean, right now, it'd probably be hard to track, this will get it all right there. And like I said, our folks worked with y'all to build it out however you want it, that's another huge advantage, so, there's something, I'm not gonna say you can do everything, but I ain't saying nothing that can't be reasonably yet. Any questions?
Any questions?
Do y'all think this is something that y'all could use, or would use? I can promise you, whoever the lady is that does y'all's PTO and comp time, I promise you won't.
I'm gonna say something.
Like I said, whenever I presented to, you remember Maggie at Pontotok?
I did.
Okay, all right. Once again, I'm a Pontotok person through and through, me and Ricky are good friends, but whenever I showed Ricky, the first thing he says, well, go see if this is something Maggie could use, the first thing she says, man, right now, we keep up on comp time, on a notebook paper, you know, that's the way they do it. And that can get kind of tricky, you know, that's for sure, like I said, just change of thought.
We don't do a lot of comp time now, Sheriff's Department, that's, you know, sometimes they have some comp time, but other than that, they keep their own down there. I think what they did, Jimmy, cut it in, I mean, 911.
Let's keep, they keep up with our tax.
Fortune 500.
What about for like your inventory stuff, you know, keys to what buildings, vehicles, phones?
Well, we have big assets in the door, but no, we don't, we don't enter that in.
I got you.
It ain't time now for us to bid, look, bid that anyway, is it?
We usually do that, what, in our health insurance is large.
You can give.
Yeah, this takes about two months.
I'll take you go to the April.
What you want, you want to put this in place about a month, the system in place about a month before any, once again, don't think insurance, before any of that goes into effect, like I said, it takes about two months to build one out, because literally, whoever the point of contact is here, they'll work with it hand in hand. And we've got, we've got a demonstration that we can show that too, like, it's actually a webinar coming up, it takes about 45 minutes, and like I said, it's one of those deals where you go, yeah, I want that, no, I ain't gonna use that, yeah, I want that, no, I ain't gonna use that, that kind of deal, and they build it out for whatever it is, and you can customize it after, you know, six months, if you go, man, I really wish we had so-and-so, give them two more months and bills it out. But right now, Aflac's the industry leader on that, on this, on this type system, integrated system, for nine, fairly Fortune 250 companies. I had an AT&amp;T whenever I was running stores for them, and it was great to have, and I brought it over whenever I went to, I'm a cell phone guy originally, 17 years in wireless, private owner, and got out. But anyhow, we use it, and it was invaluable for us to keep up with inventory system of our employees, because it ends up being more what you realize that they got. So, but yeah, absolutely, I'll get with you after this, and we'll just set up a demo and say for something that interests you guys. Sorry? Absolutely?
Thank you.
I'll kind of touch you later, that's it. What's your name again, sir?
I'm Terry.
Y'all, thank y'all very much, ain't gonna interrupt anymore, y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, y'all ready? Need to approve the reaffirmment of Ken Babel on the Northeast Board of Trustees.
Motion of Dave.
Second. Randy Oliver, motions. Need to approve expenditures report from Tax Office from November 2019.
All right. Motion to approve, motion of Randy, second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here. Need to approve the expenditure report for the Sheriff's Department Jail from November 2019. Need a motion to approve. Motion to Steve. Second by Evan, all in favor. Motion here. Need to approve the meal allowance from Jail from November 2019.
Come in at 9/97 this time, Cisco, Chad Posey was the representative of ourselves at Cisco, I don't know whether he's in the Cisco Party ways, I don't know whose idea it was, but anyway, I seen, we noticed a Heath truck at warehouse long ago, and I think also they got George's chicken, and we've been using them, and so I think they're cheaper than Cisco was.
That's good. What's the name of the truck?
Keith.
Keith?
Evidently, they taking over town on what Cisco was.
Maybe who Posey's with.
Who, I don't know.
They found out.
I don't know who he is, I heard.
That's not, I represent you, I don't know who's, who's with Keith.
Looks like they, they getting, I think George's around there, like their biggest accounting, y'all.
All right. Motion to approve. Motion of Randy, second. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion here. Need to approve the claim documents papers for November 2019. Motion of Dave. Second by Evan, all in favor. Motion here. Need to approve the board minutes from November 2019. Motion to Steve. Second. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion here. We need to approve the road department works getting in December. Motion of Randy. Second. Second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here. We need to approve the solid waste register. Motion of Dave. Second by Evan, all in favor. Motion here. We need to approve the medical examiner's fees.
My emails, I didn't, if I get it, it rolls right off.
I didn't get them, I didn't see one either, except I got.
She usually sent it to you. So I didn't get that either.
I'm both in. Good job.
Do what?
I do.
My own check. This is all. I approve.
Car wreck yesterday?
I wonder if that's a problem with my brother-in-law.
I bet they're playing that, I didn't know that.
All right, need a motion to approve. Motion of Randy, second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here. We're gonna skip number 11, maybe?
Yeah, 'cause it's number 14.
It's number 14, okay.
That was not stupid.
Number 12, we need to approve annual pay increase of $1,212 passed by the state legislature for county secretaries, justice court judges, and county prosecuting, prosecuting department. Motion of Randy. Second. Second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here. Approve salary increase of $1,212 from the county board attorney. Second. Motion of Dave, second by Evan, all in favor. Motion here.
Just sign the second line.
Handbelt hard.
Lot of head turning all over.
All right, we need to amend the budget and approve.
You wouldn't do the 14?
Let me give them the 14 here. Approve travel to mid-winter conference for county administrator, board attorney, road manager, chancellor clerk, and five of the sub. Need a motion to travel. Motion of Randy. Second. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion here.
So y'all know I'm, I got surgery on the night, so, I got surgery.
Surgery?
Surgery or circuit?
Surgery.
Surgery?
Yeah. Got tooth, got tooth issue, yeah.
Brain surgery.
Brain surgery, yeah.
What the hell?
You got pliers?
I got, I can do that.
You do the head time so you can get it up.
You ready? Yeah, let's do it.
All right, we need to amend the budget, approve transfer of $2,201 from the road fund to volunteer fire fund for the purchase of a 98 model Chevrolet truck.
That was from the purchase of the truck, you know, we did with the last meeting.
That's right.
Terry, could we split that half and half, road and bridge?
Well, if you're gonna use the truck half and half.
We are, we are.
That's right.
We'd have to approve the transfer that way, one of the minutes, if y'all, however y'all wanna do it.
We can just approve them, motion.
Half to the road fund, and then half to the?
Half out of road and half out of bridge. We'll use it for both. Whatever little bit counts.
That big a deal, tax, though.
So you want to transfer half and half of both?
Half road and half bridge? To the volunteer fund?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Second. Second by Randy, all in favor. Motion here. You ready, Miss Nae?
I am.
Okay. Need to approve budget amendment on CDVG water project by increasing the local matching revenue from light gas and water, and increasing the contractual services by 23,000.
Chad, that's when the bids came in, higher than what we budgeted, right, for the grant, so we just amend the budget on that.
I'm gonna get you to sign these, please.
Sounds good. But the city's paying for the increase in the?
Yeah, yeah, we're lighting gas, yeah.
Yeah, the county's not.
They're paying the man, but we're spending, we're back to check for the whole.
They probably finished Moncom.
If they were.
They're working on.
I've been hearing about Moncom for.
We're not hearing about Moncom, Dave. Some people on Moncom, but.
Did you get Randy made a motion?
Randy made a motion. Second. Second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here, I don't want to sign unless you get it through.
Especially with mad locks.
We need some water, I agree.
They need some water.
We're like, they getting close.
Yeah.
They were only, I went to David, that 21st century, they don't have water out there. I said 21st century, they don't have, get the water out there.
Yeah, I read an article in papers, we can go more down.
The Delta.
Delta.
Yeah, by rural.
We got no water, I mean, places in this county don't have water. I got some.
I got some.
Two different water associations, one made a sign, they can't get it through. It's right here. I tried to get a grant four times before I ever got it, to get them one.
All right, we need to approve the request for cash for ARC and TBA grant receipts, authorize underfunded loan from General Funds to Martintown Industrial Access Road Fund in amount of $200,000 to pay project costs. So we, second. Motion to Steve, second by Dave, all in favor. Motion here.
I have lots of paperwork to sign, we'll sign it later.
I got all day long.
Oh, okay.
No, I never even.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I mean, it's.
I'll have to say we get through it, we can add it to.
Good to.
All right, we need to approve the request for cash for CDVG funds and light gas and water contributions, and authorize underfunded loan from General Funds to CDVG Water Ladder extension fund in amount of $123,000, pay the cost, somebody else will pay. Motion of Randy. Second. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion here. We need to approve advertising for county depository, $2,000. Motion of Dave, second by Steve, all in favor. Motion here. Need to approve two changing voting precincts, from East Union School to Ellis Town Baptist Church, from Northeast Community College to Watson Grove Baptist Church. Second. Second by Randy, all in favor. Motion here. That would be something good to put in the papers, if you would mind, you know, changing where people get the word out to.
A bunch of times.
That'd help you, wouldn't it, Miss Nae?
And I hope.
Yeah, they will, man.
Y'all will get signs, like Evan did, closer to the election, to put up at the places, he can tell y'all how he did that.
Yeah, see, I'm gonna get it out to all the churches out there in my area, before then. You got something?
One of these jurors, one of mine.
One of them's jurors, and one of them's.
My age is.
Randy. Yeah, East Union School, they made, asked me about it, the traffic in Darrensville and all that, when they have elections, Ellis Town Jurors was happy to let us move over there, it'll work out good.
Not working.
Oh, yeah.
Basically the same thing at Ole Easton, not enough room.
I thought they was making us, I thought, ain't they making us move down the school? Well, they want us to. For insurance, for liability, safety.
Safety insurance.
So I got to, maybe this too, I got two. I was lucky, mine are both together.
Angmar Myrtle, isn't it?
Myrtle's. Myrtle's, nothing moved. I got Angmar, I got Angmar and, and West Union.
For insurance, for liability, safety. So I've got to do this too. I got to. My, I was lucky, man, I was up together.
Angmar Myrtle, isn't it?
Myrtle's, Myrtle's done moved. I got Angmar, I got Angmar and, and West Union.
Well, this time at West Union, they had the uh, Roger... Wick over there, wasn't it? Ball game, man.
Is there any way that...
All this thing that...
Do we know exactly, unless it's on, uh... Well, you got, um... Is all of them set in stone when we gonna vote, or? I know some of them are...
Unless there's a special election. We've got a calendar, probably three, four years.
You might, you might wanna get me that, where, but you know, I run into that one other time. With church, those gonna move to a church.
Because this year, we're looking at March primaries and then November's always a general election. But the primaries vary. Sometimes it's June, sometimes it's March, sometimes it's August.
All right, I swear it failed, wasn't it?
It was June.
Day in June, and they had Bible school, and there we go.
That's our judges, but presidential primaries are always March and general November, which is twenty-twenty. I'm gonna give you some dates.
Okay. All right, need to approve full-time employment for Stephen Blake already as deputy for Sheriff's Department. Motion. Motion by... Amber Kabunka. Randy, all in favor. Motion here. You want me to copy? Yeah, all right.
He got his glasses, he, he takes them.
All right, we need to approve full-time employment for Alex Brandt as deputy for Sheriff's Department, effective uh, December sixteenth.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Dave, all in favor.
You gonna vote on that one?
Uh, I'm gonna do this right here. Yes, I'm gonna vote twice. Randy, Brian?
Oh, good.
It's his son.
Oh, good.
It's not my, it's other son.
All right. All right, we need to approve longevity pay increase for Amber Weathers at the Sheriff's Department, effective December sixteenth. So moved. Second by Evan, all in favor. Motion here.
Is anything else, Sheriff?
Yep.
All right, let's hear it.
Ain't through yet.
Let's hear it.
Their graduation is Thursday, December fifth, at nine AM at East Union.
Nine AM. December fifth?
Yes, sir.
But this is kind of Thursday.
It's Thursday. Also, we don't have another board to make till...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Jerry? I just got a quote, a second quote, just now. On, on this uh, we're trying to give these vehicles. You know, y'all, we talked about the one out of there.
That's right.
We've come up with a way, I found two, can't get any chargers, they out of question. The Explorers is higher than the Durango's. Can't hardly find any of them. We found two Durango's in Jackson. It's cheaper than the Explorers. And they got a better one. They got the three-year thirty-six bumper to bumper, but the five-year hundred thousand is a fire time for less money. And, and he's got two of them. So we gotta figure this morning, out of Teresa's budget for, for that one. And we're gonna be able to get another one out of our vehicle budget and put lights on both of them with only, you happen to use like, less than a thousand dollars out of CSDS. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna be able to do it, but their quote at Jackson for the vehicle's twenty-six, seven, seventy-five, fifty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the light bar package, which includes the prisoner partition and the lights and the console, put the radio in and all that. Which is over five thousand dollars, so you gotta get two quotes, right? So we got a quote from this place in Memphis, used before concert. And their quote came in three hundred dollars cheaper, which is fifty... Three ninety-six, ninety-five versus fifty-six, twenty-five. So we had to get board approval, don't we?
That's right. Almost two quotes.
Almost two quotes.
Almost two quotes.
That does.
You'll take the cheap.
I'll make you copy this. And uh, and maybe we can go forward with our other bid.
So we need a, so we need a motion to approve the cheapest price for, for, for all this equipment to go within the... And you got all that worked out in the paper already, don't you?
I will. No, I will.
So we need a motion to... Motion by Randy, second by Evan, all in favor.
I'll make you copy, very good, yes.
Shutter's got that on.
Yeah, I just got it.
Okay. You got anything, John?
Uh, I wanna think, we're gonna have to get a roofer back down to jail. Uh, I guess Board will kick me out of there, get him to get that roofer. The, back there, in, in jail part of Control, where all the lines come in. And they make this pouring. At one, same, we had Saturday night.
Did they work on that one, like?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
Watch has equipment burnt up back there. Uh, Juve and, and Jay went back there and they had unfocused up and reroute stuff, 'cause stuff was sizzing and everything, got smoking. It's coming right into cables from, come from roofs.
So you gonna get the line?
I get the line.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
He's on vacation till when, uh, when he's there.
Is he? I'll get with him.
I bet he answers, Mom.
I'll get, I'll get with him.
That was my point, he's on vacation.
Call me thirsty. All right, you got anything? Little cat. Sam, CJ, you all good?
My birthday, Wednesday, if y'all wanna get me a gift, feel free. Mine's next week. We could have a joint, we could have a joint party. You're, we could make it. I'd go a party, yeah. Y'all all get together and carry out one for ten to ten.
Yes, I hear you.
Y'all get that one, we'll get that one.
Y'all get a Chuck E. Cheese together, I mean. We, we might do that.
Appreciate you.
Somebody else take it? Yeah, absolutely.
All right, we need to recess one for December sixteenth. Motion by Randy.
I, on this round.
All in favor. Motion here.
We have a vehicle.
You got one?
Yeah, I have a vehicle. We have.
Either she gonna go in there for a burn? Going in there for a burn?
Me, Phyllis, and Tamara and Pam are gonna be together.
We're gonna be in the G, so...
Y'all going in the G.
Tamara's driving.
Y'all need two.
Yeah.
Bullitt needs two.
Yeah.
Back of the G, be riding in the back of the G's.
We're gonna have you two bringing it, ready to go.
Make sure they got good sirens and lights.
We're doing a four. Is that right?
Flying forward.
Lighting up where it is?
But nobody else said we'd be far.
Y'all should know anything about sharing the Christmas.
I don't know where the tunnel's at, man, we're gonna have to print it in the paper.
What's the date?
The deadline?
No, the date, you gonna do it.
Oh, uh, I just can't believe it. I don't know, Lynn probably knows better than me, but they typically do it around the twenty-third or something.
Well, they usually come get keys for the guard gun, ain't nobody gonna attack them.
I get left out on that.
They just go left, huh?
I've got it in my phone, it's late ten.
That's right. They're going out, going out the twentieth, so probably we're gonna...
It's going out the twentieth?
Friday.
You find out, call them. They got the guard building.
I got eighteen in my phone, I don't know where I heard that.
They said they're giving out the twentieth. But they usually come in like, the week before or so, and start putting boxes and all that stuff.
They use that new box as like, a one-day use.
Yeah, I heard it.